You're ready?
Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Robinson and I am calling this meeting to order. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. Invocation will be led by Councilwoman Scott and the pledge will be led by Councilman Askins. Please stand.
Let us pray. We thank dear God for the season that we are here to celebrate your birth. We pray to heaven and father that you will guide us as we begin this meeting. Let us have a clear understanding, love for one another, to celebrate your birth. We pray to heaven and father to continue in order to bless Lake City, bless this country. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scott. Thank you, Councilman Askins. Now, Madam Kirk, can you please call the city council members?
Councilmember Askins?
Present.
Councilmember Lou Lamina Scott?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Singletary?
Present.
Mayor Robinson?
Present.
Councilmember Soder Colleen Cosby? Councilmember Poobert?
Present.
And Councilmember Graham. Mayor, find there to be a form.
Thank you, Madam Kirk. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
Move to that.
Second.
It has been properly moved to second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show a hand, please. Can I get a motion to approve of minutes? Approval of minutes from the November ninth, twenty twenty-three special mayor and council meeting, and minutes from November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular mayor and council meeting? It has been properly moved to second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show a hands. Thank you. We have no introductions on tonight. We will move to presentations. We have four different presentations on this evening. First, it goes in the order of Mr. Scott Garner will be presenting about American Fitnail Association, presentation of thanks and recognition to Pizza Roma, recognition of one hundred and forty year anniversary for the naming of the city of Lake City, and Denim Day proclamation that will be read as well. And Mr. Reverend, excuse me, Reverend Marvin Hemingway will be accompanying me as well in that order. Mr. Scott Garner.
I use this. All right, well, I founded American Fitnail Association October eighth. And the reason is July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, there was a knock on my door. And it was a knock on a door that would forever change my life and many people around me. Dee was my son's girlfriend of three years. And we assumed that Tanner overslept for work. So she ran upstairs to get him. And within seconds, I heard the worst screech I ever heard in my life. And I run up there with nine-one-one on my phone, expecting to see my son sick or hurt. But what I saw was my twenty-year-old son curled up in a tub, naked, cold, dead. It was half a pill of fitnail is what I found out later. Now, it's important to understand Tanner wasn't a drug addict. He took half a pill. He had a hurt back. So addicts will, obviously, that's going to be the one that's going to have the most fatalities. But it can happen. Trust me, I'm learning every day that it can happen to anybody. Every five minutes in the United States, someone dies of fitnail. Ages eighteen to forty-five is the most targeted age groups. And I think you'll see that that number's going to go lower as far as eighteen. It's the number one cause of death in that age group in the United States. It's so, so potent. Experts say that it's the most horrific drug epidemic the United States has ever faced. Just to give you an idea of what's going on, two thousand twenty in the United States, fifty-five thousand deaths. Two thousand twenty-one was sixty-eight. Two thousand twenty-two was seventy-three. And as we sit here right now, we're over a hundred. It's also important to know that the deaths are not always reported accurately because there's sometimes there's not drugs at the scene and it may be listed as a cardiac arrest. So that number could be higher. So, you know, why AFA, American Fitnail Association? I want to make a difference. I want to help save lives. My son knew of fitnail. And in my heart of hearts, I know he cut it in two because he knew of fitnail. But what he didn't know is the potency. And I just believe that what we could do, especially in a community like this, man, you know, you don't want it creeping in. So repetition, repetition, repetition. You know, in Florence, we started where we have displays that look like this. Next to the displays are brochures with my son's picture. But more importantly, inside of it is vital information, like Narcan. You know, unfortunately, but we're in a society right now, we've got to have Narcan close by. If you're going to be a drug user, you better have test strips. So I just believe that we could help it not creep into nice little cities like this, you know, by making our youth aware of it. So we will be coming to Lake City. We will be putting these in businesses that allow us to do that. But we're also going to hit social media more aggressively. We're going to get in the newspapers. We're going to get in TV, radio. Social media is going to be a huge part. You'll see us do five Ks. We're going to be involved in the community. Right now, there's three of us, but we've got a lot of volunteers. I just got licenses done so that we're legal nonprofit. But I just want to thank you for inviting me to come here. I just think that this is something that you want to head off now. I shared how the numbers are trending upwards. You don't want it hidden in your household because it unexpectedly came into mind. I never saw it coming.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Next, we have, and I'm accompanied by Mayor Pro Tem, the code Senator, and we are going to present in recognition and appreciation of Pizza Roma. They're unable to come tonight, but we will take it to their business tomorrow to present to them. Because if you've all known that they're, they are closing their business and we would like to just show appreciation to them in all of the years that they served the city of Lake City. In recognition and appreciation, Pizza Roma Restaurant. I do not want to pronounce their name wrong, so you. I think the Perachos? The Perachos? Family? Okay, that could be right. If it's not, we do apologize. In recognition of forty-two years of exceptional service, we appreciate you for all your enduring dedication and incredible mark you've left on our city of Lake City. Thank you, Lake City, South Carolina, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Okay, the next recognition we have is for all of us. This is actually, came across and was looking at the history of Lake City, which history of Lake is a lot of history of our Lake City, about our little town. And so December twenty-fourth is actually the one hundred and fortieth, we will be celebrating one hundred and fortieth year anniversary for becoming Lake City. Actually, the name of Lake City was on December twenty-fourth, eighteen eighty-three. So this is for all of us. And so the plaque says, Becoming Lake City, South Carolina, one hundred and fortieth year anniversary. On December twenty-fourth, eighteen eighty-three, due to statewide postal delivery problems, the name Graham had to be changed and this town became Lake City. Presented December twenty-twenty-three by Mayor Demika Robinson and the City of Lake City Council. I said, we better do this now because I don't know if I'm going to be here in one hundred and fifty. And actually, I was hoping that Mr. Kent Daniels or Danny Daniels will be here tonight to talk a little bit more about that. They know a lot of the history about Lake City, but I don't see him tonight. I know tonight is his anniversary, so maybe that's what happened. The last presentation we have is for the Denim Day proclamation. And I'll ask Reverend Hemingway to come up as well. I will read the proclamation and then Mr. Hemingway will proceed after that. Thank you for being here. Denim Day proclamation, whereas Denim Day began in Italy in nineteen ninety-seven when women of the Italian parliament wore jeans to work in protest of a judge's ruling that an eighteen-year-old girl could not have been raped by her driving instructor. In a statement, the judge said, because the victim wore very tight jeans, she had to help him remove them. And by removing the jeans, it was no longer rape for consensual sex. Denim Day has since became or become an international event with individuals wearing denim on the anniversary of the ruling to help raise awareness about the myths surrounding sexual assault. And whereas sexual assault is an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in the PD region as a victim survivor or as a family member, significant other, neighbor or coworker of a victim survivor. And whereas both events are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault, excuse me, remain serious issues in our society. And whereas no one person. I don't want to do this one alone. I'm sorry. I think this really means a lot to the female population. Whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own. We must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support victims, survivors, and their significant others, and increase support for agencies providing services to victims and survivors. And whereas negative and harmful attitudes concerning rape and sexual assault allow these crimes to persist and to allow survivors to be revictimized through victim blaming attitudes, sorry, blaming attitudes and unresponsive government systems. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and PD Denim Day are necessary and is needed in the PD communities as it is intended to be a method of calling attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault as well as the problem that many in our communities remain disturbingly uninformed about assault and forcible rape. And whereas the citizens of the PD deserve the support and assistance from proper education on these matters with great efforts to bring real truth and true hope for the PD from the tragedy of sexual violence to create a future where all women, men, and children can live peacefully free from violence and exploitations and. Oh, excuse me, and. This is a lot of reading. Sorry. No, it's fine. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and South Carolina Women to Women Conference, along with the City of Lake City, has declared PD Denim Day. And now therefore, be it resolved. I, Demika Robinson, Mayor of Lake City, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim that yearly, the third Saturday in April, will be designated as PD Denim Day. In witness whereof, I, Demika Robinson, Mayor of the City of Lake City, I have curatu set my hand and calls the seal of the City of Lake City, South Carolina, to be affixed on this twelfth day of December twenty-twenty-three. And I will sign and Reverend Marvin Hemingway will sign as well as the South Carolina Woman to Woman Conference Founder slash CEO. And you may be wondering, because my clerk was wondering, why we're doing this now? And this is Denim Day is in the month of April. We wanted to go ahead and try to start planning ahead. So this is the reason why, I mean, really, truly, April is right around the corner, four more months. So we wanted to go ahead and start planning so we can bring PD Day, PD Youth Day, PD Denim Day, excuse me, here in the City of Lake City in April.
Thank you to the City of Lake City. We have been doing the Denim Day in Marion County for about seven years. And it has been flourishing. And after meeting Mayor Robinson with the PD Youth Day, I had a dream and a vision that we should take this broader throughout the PD and Lake City, which is, I would like to say, is like home to me. When I first got divorced some years ago, I came to stay in Lake City for several years and loved the people here, loved the city. And I wanted to bring something back to Lake City because you were nice and kind to me. So now we want to spread the word that, remember, no means no. I just coming from a woman or a man, no means no. And if you touch someone inappropriately, I'm not understanding why this judge decided he wanted to say that this girl was not raped. If you take, if someone go to take your clothes off and you've got a gun or knife to the head and you take your clothes off, that's still not consensual sex. That's rape. So we want to spread the word throughout the PD that we stand for every women, women, men, boys, and girls, that no means no. Keep your hands to yourself. And that's what we're going to promote with education.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for all those presentations on tonight. Thank you, Mr. Garner. I heard your story when I was informed a few months back and I appreciate you coming and bringing it to Lake City. And we're going to do all that we can to help and support you in this association. And thank you, Reverend Marvin Hemingway, for coming as well. Next, we're going to go to public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during a public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in, leave your name and address.
I'm good evening, everyone. My name is. I'm good evening, everyone. My name is Margaret Jones. And the reason why I'm up here is because I had some incident that happened where I live. Okay, it was on Thanksgiving Day. I had some family member that was home. We was having dinner at my son's house. And Lake City Police Department came. They blocked the driveway. So when people was coming in, they were like, why they blocking the driveway, you know? And so I didn't notice it until this someone came and got me. And so, so my son went out there and asked him why it was blocking the driveway. They didn't say anything. And then when later on, at my back property, they went also and parked there, which I'm out of the city limit anyhow. And I was wondering why they never did say why they was parked there. Never give a reason why they were parked there. And I think that is definitely wrong when they take, you know, put on that badge and they think they can do anything they want to do. And that is not right. That is not right to the citizens of Lake City. No citizen should have a driveway blocked by any Lake City police force. And that should not have happened. And I don't like to go through closed door and talk about anything because you go through closed door, sometimes your voice is not heard. They say, okay, I'm going to do this. I'm going to do that. So you want to make it known to the people that are here in city council meeting. Now, we come to council meeting so that citizens can voice their concern. And that's a big concern for me. Thank you.
I just want to address two things. I'm addressing quickly.
Can you state your name?
My name is Jovi Anderson, senior. I live at four eleven Lilly Avenue.
Just your name?
Just your name.
Just state your name.
Okay. I'm here and I'm speaking because I've seen the difference in the police department. I understand what she's saying, but I have seen a positive change in the police department. They're more active in the community. I see them more often. They're riding now. They're making stops. A lot of people say it's picking, but it's not picking when you have a taillight out. That's called probable cause. Sometimes that little probable cause can lead to twenty kilos of fitnail, although, like he said. You know, so they're working. And it takes stages in the police department to work. One stage is being a law, a patrolman. Then you have supervisors. Then you have investigators. When you have investigators, they solve about five percent of the crime. Because very, very few times, they're going to run up on a crime that's taking place. The investigators takes, it takes years for them to get informants. Once those informants are developed, that's how crimes are being solved in the town. And without that, we don't have a police department. So I'm saying that for everybody to kind of think. And the last thing, I don't have time for it, but the community center that's way back in the hole, I really wish it could have been more centralized so more people would be, have access to it.
Any more public comments on tonight? Okay, if none, we're going to move forward with our meeting. We're going to go to legislative, part of our meeting. Mr. William Hall, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, I have before you ordinance number twenty-two-three-point-zero-one-one, second and final reading. An ordinance amending the City of Lake City's Code of Ordinance, Pretreatment Definitions, Chapter Twenty-eight Utilities, Division One, Generally Section Twenty-eight dash one-twenty-six by adding additional definitions as described and requested by DHEC.
Need a motion to approve two-zero-two-three-point-zero-one-one, second and final reading.
Question to approve?
It has been properly moved to second. Any questions, Council? No questions? All in favor, show a hand.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, resolution, resolution twenty-two-three-point-o-five-one, final reading. The resolution is being brought to Mayor and Council to seek approval to establish the Office of Appointment of the Ministerial Recorder and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution two-zero-two-three-point-zero-five-one for final reading.
Question to approve?
Has been properly moved to second. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. What necessitates having a ministerial recorder?
That gives him the opportunity to further his education and be aware and knowledgeable of the process of court. And he would be eligible to oversee bonding issues.
Okay, so what are the current qualifications for him? So this will be like a person in training?
This will be like a person that will go and sit in a class and then they would have you sit for two, two exams, correct? Two exams and pass those exams.
So it's sort of the current staff?
Yes.
Any other questions, Council? None. If none, all in favor, show a hand.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, for your consideration, resolution twenty-two-three-point-o-five-two, final reading. A resolution seeking appointment of one non-voting member of the Lake City Opportunity Board, Kate Kirby, and all matters related thereto. One non-voting member was previously approved at last meeting in November.
Need a motion to approve resolution two-zero-two-three-point-zero-five-two for final reading.
Question to approve?
Second. Has been properly moved to second. Any questions, Council? No questions? If none, all in favor, show a hand.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, for your consideration, resolution twenty-two-three-point-o-five-three, final reading. Resolution is for the City, Lake City Fire Department, is requesting approval from Mayor and Council to declare the following apparatus as surplus and also requesting the surplus equipment be donated to Florence County Sheriff's Office by way of gift and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution two-zero-two-three-point-zero-five-three for final reading. Move to approve? Second. Has been properly moved to second. Any questions? What kind of equipment is this that you have?
This is the medical apparatus that we replaced. It's nineteen ninety-eight. Value is about two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars. The sheriff's office wishes to turn it into a SWAT mobile.
You stand here.
I'm sorry? The old one, yes ma'am, that we used to use for medical calls. It's a nineteen ninety-eight model.
Turned into a SWAT unit.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you have any idea how much that's gonna cost to turn into a SWAT unit?
That's, I have no idea. I just know the value is, is less than twenty-five hundred dollars. Plus.
So when was the last time we actually used it?
About four months ago.
It's been several months, we took it out of service when we put the new rescue truck in service. So it's an out-of-service vehicle, we don't use.
It's actually been stripped down with all the equipment that we can possibly be taking off of.
Everything's off of, the only thing they wanna use it for is the hauler.
Any other questions? None? None? If none, all in favor, show of hands?
Thank you Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, for your consideration, resolution twenty twenty-three point oh five four, final reading. A resolution seeking approval uh to adopt the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule and all matters related thereto. I think the schedule was published with the agenda.
So we're adding
Election day.
I need a resolution, uh, excuse me, I need a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point zero five four for final reading.
Move to approve?
Question.
Properly moved and second, any questions? Did everyone hear that it will be added an election day, everyone heard that? Okay. If no, yeah, if no other questions, all in favor, show of hands?
Uh, Mayor and Council, thank you, Mayor and Council, for your consideration, resolution twenty twenty-three point oh five five, final reading. A resolution authorizing the granting of an easement to Duke Power Progress LLC to install new and upgrade facilities at the property jointly owned by the City of Lake City and Florence County to be furnished by Duke Power Progress LLC and all matters related thereto. Uh, in short, this is pertaining to our property, two seventy-eight Cole Road. Uh, when they bought in the new power source, they now have some money in bonds.
Need a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point zero five five for final reading. Has been properly moved and second, any questions, Council? If none, all in favor, show of hands?
Thank you Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, for your consideration, resolution twenty twenty-three point oh five six, final res, final reading. A resolution to approve the submission of an application for the land water conservation grant funds for the, to the South County Department of Parks and Recreation and Tourism to find, to fund construction of a prefabricated restroom and concession building to serve at the new multipurpose field, two baseball fields, and outer basketball court at Landing Street Park.
Need a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point zero five six for final reading, please.
Move to approve?
It has been properly moved and second, any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands?
Thank you Mayor and Council, Mayor and Council, resolution number twenty twenty-three point oh five seven, final reading. A resolution establishing approval for the acceptance and recommendation from the bid committee to award Maxie Hicks and Sons Incorporated the contract for Highway Fifty-two Waterline Project uh containment and approval for Mayor and Council of Lake City and all matters related thereto.
Contingent.
Yes, contingent, I apologize.
Need a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point zero five seven for final reading?
Question to approve?
Has been properly moved and second. Any questions?
Um, where's this gonna be located, is this the same thing right here?
Highway Fifty-two, uh, we have a, a board that's at Walmart that goes across Fifty-two. All we're gonna do is take the board, head it down to the new construction zone. There is no water line there at this moment.
And what construction zone, so what, what, is there a new construction coming to Lake City or what?
They're already building restaurants there.
Alright, so they're, so they're gonna take the restaurants that come into the
Correct, yes ma'am.
Were bids sent to um, anyone other than Maxie?
We have three bid, three companies responding for the bid request.
Okay, you're not building ours?
Uh, one with the forty-seven two twenty-two, fifty-two seven eighty, and the sixty-seven six forty-four.
Which one's sixty-seven was the other company?
Granger Pickett Construction Company, Little River, Ori County.
Any other questions, Council? If none, all in favor, show of hands?
Thank you Mayor and Council, Mayor and Council, the monthly financial reports, um, you have in your packet. Um, the general fund, we have revenues of two million five six, and we have expenses of three eight six six. Uh, we've overspent our revenue of one point three million dollars. Uh, and again, we will say that we are always two months behind in receiving our taxes. So if we look at this as a two-month period, we're running right on schedule with our revenue sources. The water fund, which is the current period, we're at one million thirty, which is forty-six percent of our budget. We've spent six hundred eighty-two thousand, which is thirty percent of our budget. Uh, we've got a surplus of three hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. In the sewer fund, we have three million one seventy-four, eighty percent of the budget. We're expenses at one million eight thirty-four, forty-seven percent of the budget. We have revenues excess of expenses of one million three. Um, and in the stormwater, we have revenues of eighty-seven, six seventy-nine. We have expenses of twenty thousand eight thirty-three, a surplus of sixty-six thousand dollars. And in the reserve accounts, uh, we have a year-to-date in the water side of thirty thousand seven forty-five. We have a year-to-date in the sewer side of thirty thousand fifty-six dollars. That's the financial report uh for, uh, November twenty twenty-three. Mayor and Council, for your consideration, I have presented in front of you through, for the monthly bills for December. Uh, bills number one through seven.
Need a motion to approve bills, items one through seven, for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve?
Second. Has been properly moved and second, any questions about the bills?
Uh, yes, I have, um, number two, Premisson Water Works.
New meters?
New meters, yeah.
Yes ma'am.
About how many meters and where were they installed?
They ordered eighty-four meters for future use and change out of old meters. And at this point, they have not been installed, they're part of the inventory. They ordered these on they were ordered on June twenty-second, they're just now coming in. That's how long it's, the pipeline is to get these items built and shipped. That's why they ordered them when they could, because we're not guaranteed to get them again tomorrow.
They haven't been paid for yet, will be paid.
Yes ma'am.
Can you state the number seven?
Number seven is, uh, the repair to the chair picker.
Any other questions?
Um, there were certain locations, uh, said equipment maintenance repairs, unit two sixty-one?
Police car had to replace transmission.
And that was on six thousand?
Six thousand dollars.
Was that the lowest you could got before?
Well, actually, he did some other stuff on another unit in conjunction with two sixty-one, and uh, if you're considering that they together, it was the lowest. And the quickest.
Okay, number so waste, number four, waste management, from eight one twenty-three to eight thirty one twenty-three.
Uh huh, yes ma'am.
So from nine one twenty-three to twelve thirty twenty-three.
Those bills haven't arrived yet.
So this is through August?
This is through August three first. That's just how slow they are getting the bills to us.
As they come in?
Yes ma'am.
We take care of them as they come in.
I think they have a staffing shortage, just like everybody else.
Okay, any other questions, Council, on the bills? If none, all in favor, show of hands?
Uh, thank you Mayor and Council, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. We do not have executive session on this evening, so we're gonna go straight into our councilmember and mayor reports. We'll start with Councilwoman Cooper.
Good evening, everyone, um. Alright, first I'd like to say, uh, thank you to everyone, thank you to everyone for coming out. Um, I will also want everyone to keep everyone that's going through approval, even right now, I think, it's like every someone in every district, I think, has something going on. So just keep the, uh, families and in prayers, um, as we get ready to go through the holiday season, the continuation of the holiday season, and also, um, the new year. Um, again, um, as far as the safety in Lake City, wait a minute, can you let the, um, community know like what's going on as far as like what's with the chief and how we remove, how the progress?
On, we have an ad running, uh, we, we put it out with the chief, our website, police website, Municipal Association, a TV commercial and radio.
Yeah, 'cause I have
It's going, we're getting out, we're getting responses all the way from Wisconsin. Uh, so I think right now, we have like seven or nine, seven?
About ten.
Ten right now, uh, so we are getting a response, they have until December twenty-second. And then in January, we will start going through the paperwork, and then we'll see how we arrange things at that time.
Uh, do you have like a ten minutes timeframe on, like when you want to, will Lake City possibly have a new chief or?
During the first quarter.
Okay.
The first quarter is what we're looking for.
And
March, February, March, yeah, I don't wanna rush into anything, we wanna make sure we choose the right person.
Right.
Community oriented, uh, and we're gonna check all the references as best as we can. So we're pushing for the first quarter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to recommend that, um, Council is involved in getting on the applications, looking through the app, applications.
We definitely are going to bring two of the three finalists in after we, we go through them, yes ma'am.
Also, yeah, interview ourselves. And we'll thank all of you all for coming in.
I'm sorry, was she, was Councilwoman Cooper saying?
You're fine, you're fine, but, um, other than that, uh, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a prosperous new year. Um, and again, stay safe this, and stay, uh, safe this one, excuse me, and y'all have a great night.
I apologize for my last question. Good evening, wanna thank everyone for coming, and we'd like to encourage you all to continue to come to the meetings, ask questions. And now that we're going into the Christmas season, we're hoping that we don't have a lot of break-ins or deaths or what have you. Um, please stay, we're just being vigilant at all times. Be respectful to each other, have a Merry Christmas and a prosperous new year. If there's anything I can do for any one of you, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. If I can't get it to you before I do it, uh, send me to a phone. And I'm very sincere about that, thank you.
Thank you all for coming out, have a happy and Merry Christmas and a happy new year.
I'd like to echo what everyone has said already, uh, it's good to see a nice crowd out here. And we're getting ready for the season, uh, we're in the season really, uh, celebrating, uh, Christmas. And I also would like to, uh, mention that, uh, I think this is our last meeting, we went to Atlanta, Georgia, to the National, um, City, um, Meeting. It was very informative, um, the trip right my knowledge about other cities, what they're dealing with, and getting ideas of what we can do to make our city grow and make a change for Lake City. And on the denning, um, I'm, I'm glad to hear that explanation, you know, some people say, uh, you know, because a woman is dressed a certain way, or a man is dressed a certain way, that entices them to have the right to put their hand on them. And, um, when I was young and went to New York, I didn't know any better, and, and, you know, but nothing didn't happen to me, but you would definitely touch it, whatever. And I'll, and I'll apologize for, so the awareness of it, especially in these days of time, especially when some of the children are dressed and, and, and some means they, because they're dressed that inappropriate to them, that they have the right to touch them. Um, I, and, and if he's still wrong, I remember when they first came to Lake City, that was my children after the game special, to go and get a New York pizza. And, um, we're gonna miss them, and, um, thank them for coming to Lake City to bring New York pizza here. Thank you everyone, y'all have a safe and happy holiday.
What they also?
Please have a happy holiday.
Before I go into my, my reports, I would like to ask Ms. Hayley Siff to come up, she has something she wanted to present, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, um, for your support tonight, um, for citizens that are here. Um, you know, there's a new multipurpose field that's being built at Landing Street Park, so the city can have its own football, soccer, hockey, lacrosse field there. And, um, it's behind the two newer baseball fields that you can access off of Grand Road. There's also a walking pathway that's been paved all around the perimeter of the park. And tonight, uh, the Council approved a resolution for us to submit and, and another grant application to build a restroom and concession stand there. Cause if you're familiar with the park, the only restroom's at the front of the park by Landing Street. And it's a long walk from the back park. I've brought some just sheets for people to add their name and address if you would like to support this. When we submit applications, the granters like to see that the citizens support the efforts of the city to improve facilities. And I thought this would be a great opportunity to ask people here after the meeting, if you wouldn't mind adding your name in support of building this restroom. That would help us a lot with the application, thank you.
Could you tell them if there's someone here that, that's not here tonight and would like to support that, can you tell them how they can?
Yes, if, um, if you are, if you know someone else that would like to support it, um, we can have this on the city's Facebook page, or there are blank copies at City Hall. And I just need them signed before Thursday. And I just need them signed before Thursday, close of business, because the application is due on Friday.
May I add to that, that the, uh, the city has a grant in place that we're already working on to move the pump station to Grand Road and run sewer lines so we can facilitate getting this park off of septic tanks. So we're, that's underway as we speak.
Thank you. Thank you so much. For my report tonight, I just thank everybody. Thank the councilmembers for your reports tonight. I thank, um, Mr. Hall and his reports and presentations. Thanks to citizens for coming out tonight and bringing your concerns, um, and everyone that's watching social media. Happy holidays to everyone. I hope everyone have a safe and, a safe holiday and enjoy your family and friends during this holiday season. Um, thank everybody who was involved in our hometown holidays. If you didn't get a chance to come downtown Lake City, um, the, I think it was about a weekend ago, um, we had a grand time with our parade and the Christmas lighting, um, and all the festivities they had going on downtown for Lake City. Uh, we do have a galore of events and activities still taking place in the City of Lake City for the holidays. We actually have our Operation Sleigh Bells, which the City of Lake City will be presenting that in as toy giveaway to our lones, um, on December fifteenth at five PM at the Village Green, which is this Friday. Um, so please look for flyers in the back, um, information on our social media website, um, and just come in and ask for more information if you like. Um, please, um, also, we have nightly, we have our holiday reading, Christmas holiday reading, um, going on on our social media. So please take our time. We have different community members, including myself, Mr. Hall, Mr. Brandon Carter, um, that took the time out to do a little, uh, bedtime story for our young people. And that will run out through to the end, I think, December thirty-first, correct? To December thirty-first. At seven PM, nightly. Um, the Boys and Girls Club have their Christmas giveaway for their members. Um, a variety of churches and organizations, um, around in Lake City are having their toy, food, and clothing giveaways. So we all want to, um, come together and help each family, uh, for ones that cannot or do as much as they wish to, but we have so many people out there that's helping. It's the time, it's the season of giving. Um, let's not forget to make sure we give much love, peace, and happiness to everyone around you. Um, it's been a joyous year. It's been a challenging year, but it's been very rewarding this year to be your mayor. And I say thank you, and the best is yet to come. Um, last but not least, I would like to say happy early birthday to the birthday boy on the end. Councilman Askins, his birthday is on December fourteenth, correct?
Right up.
Alright, I'm not gonna ask how young you are.
You deliver thirty.
But Merry Christmas to everyone, and have a happy new year. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to approve?
Second. Has been properly moved as second. All in favor? Have a good night.